We need to make an, uh, we need to amend the agenda to include a Marimac PTO donation. So can I please have a motion on the agenda?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? First favor? Five? Yes. Okay. Can I please have a motion to accept, um, the business, finance, and operations minutes from February 23rd, 2020?
So move. Second?
Any discussion? Um, over? Yeah, um, I need subcommittee updates on some of the, the idea policy update. Um, just that our march, the news have been changed around a little bit. So that's the committee need to worry about. Chris, finance?
No updates.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Um, so the next item on the agenda is public comment. And I just want to read something off to everybody before we go into public comment. These are general rules for the comment period. Okay. Public comment shall be for a period of fifteen minutes and shall generally follow the opening of the meeting. The committee reserves the right to rearrange its agenda to accommodate scheduled presenters. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee shall identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no more than three minutes. The chair may commit extension of this time limit. No citizen may speak more than once without permission of the chair. All citizens shall speak to the full committee through the chair and shall not address individual members or administrators. Topics for comment may include but are not necessarily related to those listed on the school committee agenda for that evening. It shall be in order for any committee member to direct questions to the speaker through the chair in order to clarify comments of the speaker. A group of citizens appearing at a meeting to express favor or opposition to a particular agenda item should designate one member of the group as a spokesperson to be heard on the topic. Other members of the group may be heard if they feel that they can contribute additional information regarding the topic. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens and the committee. It is a citizen's opportunity to express his or her opinion on issues of school committee business. The committee and/or administrators may not be prepared to directly respond to citizens' questions posed in this forum, but the chair may request that the citizens put the question in writing to the appropriate person or body so that the matter is given the proper consideration. Speakers may offer such objective criticism of the school operations and programs as concerns them, but in public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor against any member of the school committee. Under most circumstances, administrative channels are the proper means for disposition of legitimate, I'm sorry, legitimate complaints involving staff members. Citizens may also be heard on specific issues at other points on the agenda with the approval of the chair. Improper conduct and remarks will not be allowed. Defamatory and abusive remarks are always out of order. If the speaker persists with improper conduct and remarks, the chair may terminate that individual's privilege of address. Um, I ask Deanna tonight to keep time. We have fifteen minutes for the first session, proper session. Um, if everybody speaks for three minutes, then only allows for five speakers. Um, so Deanna is going to set a three-minute timer, and, uh, when you have one minute left, she's going to hold up the sign and that lets you know to finish up. And again, we ask anybody with a microphone to please identify who they are. And it's not a dialogue between the school committee and the community.
I'm Ben Bolio. I'm a senior at Penn Tuckett. Members of the school committee, over the past few weeks, have been approached by a number of my classmates regarding a decision that was made last month on the gowns that we will wear in June. Among all the students that have reached out to me via email, text messages, phone calls, social media, and in person, I've heard an extensive amount of insistancy. Um, a considerable one of my fellow seniors, especially those in student leadership roles, are here tonight, and therefore I would now like to yield to my classmates who wish to speak to this matter.
My name is Nicole Tedesco. I'm a member of the senior class. First, I would like to thank you for taking the time to have this meeting, as well as thank the students who came to show their support for this topic. I'm here before you tonight to represent the students that feels though we can make everyone feel included while also keeping the tradition of green and white gowns and discontinuing the gender assigned to graduation gown. First, I would like to give a little bit of history. At the end of December, we had a class meeting with fellow of our prom's graduation gown. In this meeting, our class advisors, Ms. B. and Mr. Sherman, made the decision where we, the students, were allowed to have the choice of which color gown we would rather wear. These gowns were not gender assigned. I am under the impression that some of the school committee members may have not known about this before the first vote. I am proud to say that the student body has decided to share their voices with you tonight. After being informed of this change through the local newspaper and watching the previous school committee meeting video, some students were discouraged. It was frustrating that some, that the school committee did not feel as though it was a student's decision, when in reality it is our graduation and we do live in a world with these issues. Though we do appreciate the fact that the school committee did bring this to the students after the fact, we do wish it was brought up and discussed to get our input. The student body has reached out to the advisor of the Gay Street Alliance, Ms. Cece, and the president of the Gay Street Alliance, Alexandria Janelle Fowler, and of course, the other students. In a statement from Ms. Cece, she expressed that she did not feel this was an issue with LGBT plus community inclusivity pertaining to this issue because the students had a choice. Alexandria Janelle Fowler, the president of GSA, unfortunately cannot be here tonight, but asked me to share this message with the members of the committee. I, Alexandria Janelle Fowler, a member of the senior class and president of the GSA, support the traditional procedure of green and white gowns. I would like to speak on the behalf of a group which I am a part of, the LGBT plus community. The choice between green and white gown is very important part of the trans community's identities at Kentucky Regional. Being able to wear the color of your chosen gender is important. This is the acceptance of which we all serve and the respect that you've taught us to command. I believe that by making us all wear the same color forces us out of individuality and forces us to once again conform to what's comfortable for society and furthermore makes members of the trans community feel as though they're inconveniencing the whole. There's no reason to once again make this group feel alienated. High school is a hard, is a hard place to be here you are. Should, so shouldn't leaving and going to the adult world at least make them feel hopeful. In conclusion, as a senior in high school, disbelittling to feel as though our school committee does not trust or believe in the student body, who is allowed to vote in our nation's election, but we're not originally allowed to vote or have a voice in, or a voice our opinion in an issue that we deal with on a regular basis. A petition that we put up to the senior classes already has fifty percent of the class's signatures and support. We propose that, um, the graduation now is left up to the students to decide on which color they would like. Once the new Kentucky Regional Middle School and High School is built, the staff and students and community members could change it if they feel that's the appropriate thing to do. As the last line of the alma mater says, "All hail the green and white."
Good evening, members of the school committee. I'm Ann Marie Beach. I'm a West Newbury parent and, um, parent of two current seniors. I've also had four children that have all gone through the district. I'm here tonight also to comment on the graduate, graduation gown discussion. I respect the school committee for bringing up this topic, as I know many other communities are currently reviewing this policy, as well, um, in particular Braintree right now, which is a receipt of the exact same letter from the ACLU in January of this year. I think everyone here would agree that no one would openly discriminate, nor want to pressure a child into choosing something they are uncomfortable with. What I'm most disappointed with is the way this decision came about. There was no public input, nor was it widely dispersed that this topic would even be up for discussion. As such, I think this is a disservice to the students and the community of Kentucky. I feel we're better than that. While many districts have chosen forward with one gown color, there are some that have chosen to stick with two. In doing my own research, I'd like to quote two in particular. The first being Franklin High School. They said, "Let students choose their own color." And according to their principal, Peter White, he says, "I think we were able to move it forward in that we don't discriminate on any group of students on any basis, and yet we're able to keep some of the tradition of Franklin High School." Also, Springfield High School in Harvard. According to their principal, James O'Shea, students also choose to keep blue and white robes, but assign them randomly. So I would ask, I know that Westford schools also went through the same procedure last year and put a policy subcommittee together to review and address this policy, not only for graduation robes, but also student dress code in general. As the law states, this policy can also interpret other things, such as all gender-based activities, rules, policies, and practices that can be extended to include such items as school ceremonies, school photos, and field trips. So while for the class of 2020, they decided to move forward one robe, during the discussion last year for the class of 2019, they stated that they put a subcommittee together and they said, "Given that our dress code policy review has not been fully completed at this time, and given the timing issues involved for the current seniors, we feel it is within the administrative decisions to permit such a color choice compromise. We would further like to clarify that every effort should be made to communicate that this is a genuine choice, and every student should feel free to select either the maroon or the white robe without regard to pass, uh, to gender or past tradition." So I would ask tonight that Kentucky takes the same approach and not rush into this and give it the time it deserves for review, for review and keep this here as is. Braintree is also currently going through this process as well. We want to make sure that all voices are heard, and I hope that all students will benefit from any new inclusive and unified policies. Thank you for your consideration, Nicole.
We only have two speakers left, um, for the fifteen minutes. I didn't know if there was anybody that wanted to speak on another topic that hasn't been heard about, or not positioned to the graduation gown topic.
My name is the school committee. My name is World Bridge, and I'm a teacher at the Bagnon School in Groveland. Since I've been in this district, teachers have raised many issues concerning our schools that have a direct impact on our students' ability to learn and to succeed. For every issue, we have been given the same reply from the district administration. When we brought up our concern about the fact that there was and still is no curriculum for science or social studies, we were told to get creative and figure something out. We can't afford anything right now. When we brought up our concern about the fact that class sizes were getting so large that students were not getting their needs addressed, we were told to get creative and figure something out. We can't afford anything right now. When we brought up our concern about the fact that teachers still don't have enough resources to teach the state standards in any content area, we were told to get creative and figure something out. We can't afford anything. When we brought up the fact that there is not enough staff or resources to provide quality intervention for students who have been identified as needing extra support, we were told to get creative and figure something out. We can't afford anything right now. When we brought up our concern about the number of students that special educators have on their P's loops, too many to serve without giving up contractually guaranteed prep time, we were told to get creative and figure something out. As you consider the budget items on the agenda today, please remember that while teachers have accomplished amazing feats in terms of curriculum development and creative scheduling, our students' education has been harmed. All of this lack of funding, despite all of the creativity in the world, has meant lower test scores, higher numbers of students receiving special education, more incidence of behavior stemming from social, emotional issues, and more students who, unable to make meaningful connections with teachers, feel lost in our district. Now the teacher, the district has come to the teachers saying yet again, there is just no money to properly fund our students' education. We're saying that our creative juices are tapped out, and that instead, the towns, the committee, need to work together to get creative and figure things out, because our students can no longer afford how things have been operating. Thank you.
My name is Jess Sosa, and I also teach at the Bagnon School. This is my ninth year there. I'm not a resident within the district, but this community has become my second home. The students, family, and staff in Kentucky mean so much to me. My first class graduated last June, and now my students are spread out across the middle and high school, not just at Bagnon. I love them and their families. Many of the staff at Bagnon have been there with me since the beginning for me, and have been there for me both professionally and personally. With all that being said, I am one of the one hundred teachers whose step in column needs to be corrected. In fact, my salary is flipped to twenty thousand dollars less than market value. I know this because the results from the market assessment done by a third-party consultant for the district shows this, but also because I did my own research into surrounding districts. I am the primary breadwinner for my family, but I do not make it up to make ends meet. I should have a second job, but that would require daycare, which would cancel out any additional income that I made. Instead, I try to find certain conditions to supplement my income. But this is not just about me. This is also about my colleagues who are in similar boats, getting paid far below market value. It is about my colleagues who are near retirement, whose pensionable income has been greatly impacted over the last few years. It is about all of us. Meanwhile, the teaching demand seems to keep growing. We give our time, endless hours outside of contract hours, planning, meeting, developing curriculum. We give our own money to buy ourselves curriculum resources, to buy resources for our students, to buy things we think would make our classrooms more inviting, engaging, and safe. And we do it because we love our kids. So while you are going to discuss how to address the six hundred and fifteen thousand dollar deficit, please know that there are many other things that are broken here that need to be fixed. Thank you.
Michael Lynn, President of Kentucky Association of Teachers, President of the Board of Commons. Below is a piece from the 2020 budget book. "Kentucky spends six hundred and seventeen point oh-one less per pupil than the state average on education. Using this data as a comparison only based on two thousand four hundred and fifty-four pupils at the time of this reporting, Kentucky is spending one point five one million dollars less than the state average. The average spending of the Essex County districts listed in this report, using the actual number of districts as a denominator, is approximately fifteen million. Kentucky is two point seven two percent below that average, which would translate as spending approximately one million dollars less than our neighboring school system. The two point seven percent below the average Essex County school district is very concerning as the one, approximately one million dollar average is exactly the same amount that teachers in our school district are being underpaid based on the fair market analysis that has been completed during the negotiation process." Students, who do you play for?
Jay Jones.
Teachers, who do you work for?
Kentucky.
Notice that one of those people in the audience said anything about Merrimack, West Newbury, or Groveland, right? So why does it seem okay for the teachers and students of the district to continue to bear the burden of insufficient funds, yet we express concern over the impact on the towns' taxpayers? PRSD is the lifeblood of these communities. It's time for a paradigm shift. Thank you.
So as we wrap up the, uh, public comment, is there anybody else that has anything to add that has not already been so received yet? After seeing any, the next item on the agenda is student tenant and student representative.
Thank you very much, Ben. And I turn it over to Mr. Bolio, who can fill us in on the student news, and we'll come back with everything that's going on in the district.
Thank you, Dr. V. The high school musical for the spring, "The Wiz," will be taking place, um, on March fifth and sixth at seven PM. March seventh at two PM and seven PM, all here in the high school auditorium. The Kentucky girls' basketball team will face off against Wilmington tomorrow night. That's at seven PM at Lawrence High School. It's the MIAA Division Two North semifinals. And Kaden Curry, he's a freshman here at Penn Tuckett. He was also the winner of Penn Tuckett's Poetry Out Loud contest. He recited his poem at the regional semifinals. This is last Saturday in Newburyport. And the school also has a Sadie Hawkins dance coming up. That's Friday, March thirteenth. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bolio. So, uh, Ben, I have a few, quite a few items here. First, I handed out, and I had sent you some emails, so I'm sharing with you here in hard copy, a letter that we received yesterday from the ACLU of Massachusetts. Uh, it's addressed to myself, Mr. Tomway, Mr. Seymour, and Ms. O'Connor. Um, you can read that, the gist of this, or the key parts. They identify the long history, and I'll just read, and then on the second page, it says, "As we understand that school issues only give either green or white gowns and matching caps, and almost all students who identify as male still select green, and those who identify as female select white. Situation leaves transgender and non-binary students with the option of only choosing between two colors, each of which is associated with a binary gender identity. It also leaves transgender and non-binary students at risk of harassment or bullying if they choose the color that the other stu, that the other students feel is not accurately associated with their apparent gender. As I understand it, at least one binary student has felt compelled to seek counseling over this issue and the dilemma presented by this choice. As a result, we believe this arrangement likely discriminates against transgender and non-binary students in obtaining the advantages and privileges of the school and violation of law. Indeed, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and its guidance on general law chapter seventy-six, section five, as amended, specifically noted that the law requires adjustments to gender-biased graduation cap and gown policies, and spoke favorably about policies designated the same colored caps and gowns for all students. Uh, the school's gender association gowns may also raise issues of gender discrimination under Title IX." And then they talk about the enforceable, uh, cases. And they conclude with, uh, "For these reasons, we ask that Kentucky Regional High School promptly, in time for graduation 2020, designate that all students will wear the same colored caps and gowns, uh, which could still reflect the school colors. For instance, everyone could wear green gowns and caps with white tassels, rainbow sashes, green gowns, white caps, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Not only will this bring Kentucky regional schools into compliance with the law and avoid unlawful discrimination, will ensure that all students feel welcome and fully included, the right and lawful thing needs to be done here regardless of whether some members of the community object to loss of tradition." Um, so I just wanted to share that letter with you. I know we're, that's going to be coming up, um, on our, the first thing that's on our issue, but just wanted to get, because I don't think anybody out there in the audience has this, so I'm just reading a few key points. I have one other remark when we get to that topic. Um, also, there's two of these, there's a third one, I'll pull it up here. It assures me this will work. So we also have, um, we've undergone a new branding. This was a free service, uh, that we went into with V.I.P. varsity and DSN. You know, we've had all sorts of different logos. I've talked and talked about when I go into the gym, and what I love having been here. I do not love seeing a inaccurately historic, uh, image for our topic. So we know, we know what we went through. We had the P that went out there. So that is our main logo moving forward. I just want to share, it's a whole branding guide, and all vendors, they'll be able to access this, and you'll see some familiar images. Obviously, that seal, that's the seal, we have no ability to, this is just here, this is a student shield. If you subscribe to this program, we have this up on here, uh, this is one of the new images. Um, there's a font, this they look daily familiar. Anybody?
We are.
Ben? We are Penn Tuckett, right? So I said to them, "Look, we have this great thing, we have Penn Tuckett. It bridges all three, it means all three towns below." Uh, so here's the nine new different, uh, images. The P is the focal point, but you can play around with these. It can be Penn Tuckett, uh, it can be Penn Tuckett Theater, it could be, you can change a lot of these names. But I just wanted to share, this is now complete. They will send to us a digital version of that, and then they will start uploading a digital store, or they'll, sorry, they'll, they'll create an online store so we can get all of our Penn Tuckett swag, uh, which I know is mostly missing, because there's no place to go and get. I just want to share that that is complete, and it was way longer. By the way, the audience, here are the official colors, and this has exact hand tones and things like that, so, and we order for events, anyone knows what it's going to look like. Just want to share that, but I don't want to be my email. Uh, next, there will be a perception survey for students, teachers, and parents, and since I've got everybody here in the audience, be on the lookout for that. It's going to be nearly identical as to what we sent out last year. There'll be a couple of changes, uh, because we have additional, there's some additional things we want to find out. So we'll be asking, we'll have it open for about a week, and we'll ask everyone to complete it. Um, again, that's parents, students, and, uh, teachers. You only get to do one, so you do have to sign in in order to do it. Um, but just be on the lookout for that, and there'll be a message, I'm sure, we'll put out there on social media. Uh, you heard the teachers mention a couple times about taxpayers, and also, uh, you know, what are we going to be doing? Well, yesterday, um, I met with Senator Tar and Representative Meier for about three hours. We talked about a lot of the struggles, we got some of the same things the teachers are saying. Uh, we have some direction. What I'm going to be asking, um, is in the very near future, that when we come up with a few key things that we think will help legislatively, where, that we get the same kind of support we see here today, it would be wonderful, we get that same support to make sure that we do get, uh, a lot more relief than what we've been receiving. And also, along those lines, Mr. LeBrec and I, we were both at the Board of Selectmen in West Newbury during February break. We were at Merrimack's FinCom last week, last Monday, and I was at the Board of Selectmen in Groveland last night, and this topic came up. And then, so I think the towns are understanding that there are significant issues, um, and that it cannot continue. One of the questions that was asked of me last night was, "Do you see this being solved in the near future?" And my response was, "Not without significant changes and with significant, without significant pressure on a legislative." So, uh, the hope is that we'll replace, but LeBrec and I also have meetings with, uh, with Philly FinCom next Tuesday, and Groveland FinCom on the first. Uh, one other thing about those, and this came up among meetings, that next year, we might be working with all three towns at the same time to talk about the budget, which could be very beneficial and be a pretty rich discussion. That came up in one of the Board of Selectmen. I think that would be an excellent way, uh, to approach the conversation. And my final part, we have next Thursday, that is March twelfth, right here at the high school, there will be a mindfulness program. It's part of our social, emotional learning and bullying seminars that we've been holding, but it's mindfulness. It's very, very useful information. Uh, Dr. Miko, who's on staff with us at Page, show, she's heading that presentation. Um, she put her entire dissertation on this, but a lot of the strategies she has for parents, students, and even teachers, are incredibly effective in helping students relax, decompress, and kind of get focused. So that is the news I have for you.
Thank you, Ben.
You're very welcome.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is executive session. Um, so we're going to, um, do that to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position, up to public body and the chair so declares. So, uh, one more, Deanna?
Yes.
Do you have a motion first? Have a motion?
So move. Second?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Chris?
Yes.
Yes.
And we'll be coming back.
Good, thank you.
It's very refreshing.
Okay, so we're back in session. I just wanted to thank everybody for being patient with us while we had our meeting. So the next item on the agenda is graduation gowns. Members of the committee asked this to be put back on the agenda for further discussion. Some members would like to rescind the vote. Please note, according to Robert's Rules of Order, in a committee, you can rescind or amend a committee decision by a majority vote if all members who voted in favor of the motion to be rescinded or amended are present or received adequate notice. Otherwise, the two-thirds vote required applies to the vote to rescind, amend, committee action. May I, Dina?
Well, I was the one that wanted to rescind the vote, just because I feel like we voted, and I didn't have all the information that there, I didn't have any, I didn't realize that they had already, they were already allowed to choose between the two, and I feel that, and they had already chosen and sent their money in, and I feel like it just wasn't even, it shouldn't have been an issue. And I realized that, you know, it was brought, I understand why it was brought up, but at the same time, like Nicole said, you know, she talked to the guidance counselor, she talked to Alexandra, and they said, and there doesn't seem to be a problem with anybody, so I don't, I don't know why we wouldn't give, let the kids decide, at least this year, and then we can revisit it. I mean, the ACLU, I know they did send the same, they sent the same letter to other towns, so, and it was verbatim, so I just feel that, you know, we should be given a little time on this, and we don't, we shouldn't be forced into making them change that this year.
Marie?
I have the same feelings as Dina. I feel that with the last vote, I can say personally, I didn't realize the students had, as Dina said, already chosen their gowns for this year, they had already paid. And as one of the speakers, so I'll completely say, it should be a discussion amongst students, and I think that a subcommittee would be a great idea, to work with the students to make a decision regarding their graduation. And while I'm all for inclusivity, I don't want anyone to feel a doubt, or hurt, or, I just think that timing of the vote and the fact that we didn't have all the information when we made it, I think this is definitely something that we should be looking into, but with more time and detail.
I think we need a motion on the floor, a motion to rescind the voting session, so.
Okay. I would like to motion to rescind our decision on making the kids choose one color gown.
A second.
And as a point of order, does everybody vote, or only those people who voted the first time?
It's my understanding that the only people that are allowed to vote are people that were here, voted before, so therefore Joanna and Chris would not be allowed to vote this evening.
But does, Chris?
What we were given in our, in our description of this, is that Robert's Rules of Order is you can only rescind or amend if all members who voted are here, present. So everybody who voted yes for it last time are around the table. I don't believe it then goes into whether or not, if you didn't vote for it, you can't re-vote.
Mary Ann, do you have?
I spoke with Dorothy Presser from the MASC, and that was my understanding.
But it's just whether we can revisit the vote?
So also, I-
And then it can be a two-thirds.
I also checked with our council, and they said only those individuals who voted in the affirmative are allowed to rescind.
To rescind?
Or, sorry, to-
To vote to rescind, but then can you vote?
Oh, yes, on the next-
Yes.
Yes, okay.
It's the vote to rescind.
Well, I'm wondering whether that's-
Good question. Sorry.
Yep.
Dick?
I have a question for Ben. I heard through the grapevine that the student body, seniors, class of 2020, they actually favored the green gown with a white scarf. Is that true? Is that just rumor?
That was a poll, a survey that was sent out to us after the decision was made at our, the meeting in February where this original decision was voted on, with our options of having only one color. So those are the options that were presented to the senior body with the vote that was made here.
And how does the senior body today feel about the single color and a white scarf?
Point of order, I don't think we can ask Ben necessarily to represent the entire student body.
Well, that's why he's sitting here. He's sitting here representing the high school.
Yeah, but he hasn't had an opportunity to talk to us or anything with his-
No, but he can tell me, I've only talked to three kids, I have no problem with that.
So you're asking him his own personal opinion?
Yes.
Don't answer if you don't want-
Can I move to vote?
If I made you uncomfortable, I'll withdraw the question.
I'm fine with answering, because I've had a number of students approach me about it.
Okay.
And from what I've heard from those students, they were upset with the vote that was here.
Thank you.
Can I move to vote?
Yep.
Vote on rescinding the motion?
Can I, yeah, I'd like to move to vote on rescinding the motion, and letting, and keeping it as it was before the vote.
Second.
Okay, now we're going to go into discussion. Does anybody have anything to add to this? Emily, you look perplexed.
Well, yeah. Yep. So, if, so by rescinding this vote, are we then going to, will that automatically revert to what was previously in place?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just another point of order question. Is there any difference in the price of renting or buying the new gowns versus the old gowns?
Mr. Seymour, the question was, is there any cost difference between the gowns that they originally selected versus the gowns with stoles or any, there would be with the custom gown, for certain, but there's not enough time for them to have-
So if I understand the question, is there a difference between the original setup, which is, so we have two different colored gowns, a white gown and a green gown, or the other one? The difference in cost would be a stole, if that's ultimately what's decided, if there's an accent stole, right, so that's the thing that hangs around the neck. There's some pictures in the packet of things that were put in the circuit, so those would be, and I don't have the exact price on that, but that would be a difference in cost.
Wayne?
When I was first presented this, I asked them to change the name of the day for the real reason, but that was previously stated. My question to everybody is that our motion was to have a single color gown. I think you should look back on the minutes, that's what it was. So when I saw that students were thinking, well, why not have a separate color stole? That wasn't our motion. Our motion was a single color gown, and the students could vote all they wanted, to have whatever they wanted for stole. So the motion itself was a color of a single color gown. I thought it was a great idea by the students, and then, then it ended up challenging, it was Mr., it was the principal of the school's idea, if we wanted to be in the line, why don't we get stole? And then I thought it was strictly from students, and I thought it was a great idea, a great compromise, and you guys made that decision, and it really had no effect on our vote of last week, to vote for a single gown for the protection of all.
I'll see, Dina, do you have your hand raised?
No.
Okay, Chris, I'm on Ben.
I'll let Ben go first.
I would just like to say that if any committee member has a question for me, I feel comfortable answering that, based on the number of students that have talked to me about this issue.
So I guess, the committee had voted to decide on a single color gown. A survey was sent out as to what that would look like, but still being a certain color gown. What I heard from students' parents and people involved tonight, and prior to tonight, is that they're not happy with the decision of a single color gown. And I think that's where rescinding the vote would, would change that and would open up the opportunities. The survey was not done with student input. The student, the survey was done by administration, and I don't believe there was any student input on how that looked.
So, so just a couple, I'm sorry, was there someone else that was on? So just a couple things, I know we read from the ACLU, I did get from legal counsel, that it is, this, they've seen somewhere else, but as long as students have the option, it's not viewed as discriminatory. That said, they did cite some correct things in terms of safe schools, that is the direction that the state gives, to go through a uniform, one singular type of gown. But again, that's, that's the decision of the school committee to make, and obviously Safe Schools makes that suggestion in guidance, because they want to make sure that no one is single out.
Dina, and then Wayne, and then Emily.
Well, I understand, I understand the letter, and I understand why, but I just don't think, I think we could, I don't think it should have to apply, because they had already, everything had already been done. Like, I just don't think they should have to change it this year. I mean, if there's a discussion, then I'm all for, you know, talking with students about changing it next year, but I feel that since it, it shouldn't have even been really an issue.
Wayne, and then Emily.
You have the honor of explaining how you've been a long, not a tiny time around, but I don't believe you said that.
Yeah, I have stuff I'm going to read to the audience when everybody's done commenting on stuff, yeah.
But Justin, the chair-
Justin talked about it.
I'm already here.
Okay.
Lisa was, she just got from a town.
Okay, Emily?
I didn't know that better. So, I have a lot of, I'm struggling a lot with this. I totally understand the students' opinions and their emotions around this. I agree that the timing, not great, probably couldn't really eat too much work, but I also feel super strongly that it is our responsibility to create an environment where everyone feels valued, and that they, I, like I said, the last time we had this conversation, I really wish that this had come from the students. I, I'm torn, because I, like, I know that they want to have input, and I think that they should have input, but I also know that, that the, that there are groups in this school that are at risk, and that this is, to me, also a very small thing, even though it feels very big. It can be also a small thing that we, as the board, can do to, to protect some kids who, you know, I mean, under the law, need and deserve protecting.
Thank you. Bill?
I think, you know, a couple of things, you know, to add to what you're saying. There's been a lot of changes in school policies over the last few years. The school committee has the prerogative to determine the policy concern of what the caps and gowns are, and with the modification of going to a single gown, students were invited to vote. The ACLU letter is a serious letter. They are a very serious organization. I don't think it's done just, oh yeah, here, let's mail it somewhere else. I think that this is also state policy, and this is going to be something we're going to be seeing more. I think the protection part is huge. So, it's my two cents. It was, this was also out there before the vote, and we had to almost discuss it, to put it on the agenda, so I don't think everybody was operating completely in the dark when the vote came up. So.
Chris?
But I do believe that this was not added to the original agenda that was published publicly, it was added after that. Information was handed to us the night before, at a separate school committee meeting that was not in the electronic packet, and I don't believe that until that night, it was actually something that we were voting on, it was something we were discussing. So I do believe that the people who felt that this was slid in without public notice is a valid concern.
It was on the amended agenda that was posted on Friday.
The amended agenda, that was amended that night?
No, no. It was on the agenda, and it was posted-
As a discussion.
On Friday, yes, it was a discussion, but that night, when I came in, Dr. B told me that we needed to vote on it because of the deadline to order the gowns.
Right.
But it was on the public agenda that was posted.
The second one that was posted.
The second one that was posted, at least 48 hours before the meeting.
But the fact that it would be a vote was not made until that, until the meeting.
Due to time constraints, yes. And the committee did vote to approve that amendment. Ben?
I would just like to refer back to the comments that a student made in the public comment section of the meeting, where a statement was read from the group here at the high school, the GSA, the Gay Straight Alliance, where LGBT plus community meets, I believe, weekly. And this, I know, was discussed at one of their meetings, and the statement, as was, as it was read tonight, was saying that they believe they should have the two separate gowns as a choice. I just wanted to say that one more time.
Okay, so, does anybody, because I have a lot of things here I want to say. Does anybody have anything else? Okay. Well, I wanted to thank everybody for coming tonight, and I, I understand both sides of this, and like Emily said, it's a very difficult decision that we have to make, and most school districts have already gone through this, already in Massachusetts. At my, at the February 4th meeting, I had called up 66 schools in the district, and 47 of them had already made this change, and five of them were debating it. So it is something that has come down from the Department of Education, Safe Schools, that it is, that we should go to one color gowns for the, for the inclusion of all students, for the unity of schools. And I know Alex Fowler, who is not here tonight, Nicole had gotten up to read, and one of the things that Nicole had said was that, had addressed the transgender community, and how it, I'm taking this out of abeyment, but it's important to the transgender community, because if you have, if you have a student that is a transgender male, they might actually be happy to be wearing a green gown, because traditionally that was a green gown, a green and, you know, male gown. And the same thing with a transgender female can wear white, because they're, they're out and they're open. And that's wonderful for the transgender population. But we still have kids that are questioning, that are not out to their families, they're not cisgender, they're not transgender, they're not gay, they're not lesbian, but they're non-binary, or they're gender neutral, or they're gender fluid, and they don't fall into any category, and they shouldn't have to be put into either category, they shouldn't have to pick between two colors. And there's also kids that are not out yet at all, or they're questioning, or they don't even feel safe at home, and they can't express, or they're not allowed to pick a color that they want to pick, because their parents or their grandparents won't allow it, or maybe they have family members that don't accept them. There's a lot of kids out there who are not accepted by their families, and it puts these kids at risk, not just with their peers, or with, you know, their parents, but a lot of these kids, this can even put them into a crisis mode. And I think, you know, I personally would never want to have that liability hanging over my head, that, you know, I made a decision to go with the traditional colors that have a gender-specific historical connotation attached to them, and there's no getting around that. And again, I do respect what Alice, what Alex said about, you know, the transgender community of students being able to pick, you know, the colors that they feel that they should be wearing, and I fully support that, too. But it doesn't speak for the entire GSA. And just because the GSA club, you know, feels one way, it, there's a whole, there's a- it, there's a whole, there's a, there's a bunch of kids out there that are not part of that club, for whatever reasons, that they don't feel comfortable, they're not out, they're still questioning. And those are the kids that we have to be mindful of. And again, it's a very, very difficult decision to make. But again, we never want to put any child into crisis mode. So, I'm just going to read a letter that I received earlier from a parent. The parent is not identified. Let me just get the letter. And I did share the letter with the committee, with the school committee tonight so they have it in front of them. So, now I'm going to read it for everybody. Says, "I wish to be able to write this letter and provide my identity without fear for the repercussions it could cause my child, a Kentucky student. Unfortunately, my child is not confident that there would not be reprisals if they were to openly share their view on the pending issues of the high school graduation, caps and gowns. What is not being conveyed is that the students who do not see themselves within a gender binary, the requirement to select a green or white gown is wrought with anxiety. Although the school is affording students a choice, white continues to be the color assumed to be female and green continues to be assumed male. There may be students who feel comfortable selecting something outside of this, but what of the student whose family places pressure on them to select the color that is aligned with their assigned gender, which is their gender of birth? Or of the student who experiences the cultural pressure to select the color that goes with their assigned gender? For these students, this is a process that makes the graduation ceremony inexperienced, distressing. Please know that for those students for whom this is an issue, they are not going to feel comfortable going against the tide and consensus of their peers. They do not want to be singled out. I hope that you will consider those students who are not present to voice their view on this and why it might not be comfortable for them to do so. Finally, I hope you'll determine that inclusivity for all should be the driving factor in your decision and one gown color achieves this." Thank you for your time. I also received information in last month's packet. There was a letter from the DESI, the common, sorry, is it this month's packet? The Commonwealth of Massachusetts Commission on LGBTQ, which is the Department of Education. And this was in tonight's packet that went out. The Massachusetts Commission on LGBTQ writes to provide a perspective and advice on the issue of gender-neutral graduation gowns currently be reconsidered by the school committee. For the safety and well-being of transgender and non-binary students, the commission urges the school committee to stand by its initial decision to change graduation gowns to a single color. The Massachusetts Student Anti-Discrimination Act provides that no person may be excluded from a public school in any town or discriminated against with respect to obtaining the advantages, privileges, and courses of study of such public schools on the basis of race, color, gender, I'm sorry, race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, or sexual orientation. Mass General Law, Chapter 76, Section 5. Requiring transgender and non-binary students to choose between two colors, each of which is associated with a binary gender identity may run the risk of depriving these students from obtaining the advantages and privileges of their school. It also leaves these students at risk of bullying and harassment from fellow students should they choose a gown color that does not reflect their apparent gender. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI, and its guidance on General Law, Chapter 76, Section 5, is amended, specifically noted that schools should eliminate gendered policies and practices such as gender-based gowns for graduations, such as different color graduation gowns. The commission is proud to work alongside DESI in carrying out the Safe Schools program for LGBTQ students, offering a range of services designed to help students implement state laws impacting LGBTQ students, including the state's anti-bullying law, gender identity law, and student anti-discrimination law. For these reasons, the commission urges the school committee to uphold its initial decision to change graduation gowns to a single color. We would be happy to provide advice and guidance with respect to this issue. And Dr. B already read the ACLU letter. I read the parent letter. And I also wanted to read some school committee policies and make guides to some things. We have policy AC that was adopted in May of 2007. I'm just going to read sections of it. "The commitment to the community is affirmed in the following statements of school committee intent to: promote the rights and responsibilities of all individuals as set forth in the stated federal constitutions, pertinent legislation, and applicable judicial interpretations; work to at a more integrated society; carefully consider and all the decisions made within the school system, the potential benefits or adverse consequences that those decisions might have on the human relations aspects of all segments of society. The committee's policy of nondiscrimination will extend to students and will apply to race, national background, religion, sex, economic status, political party, age, handicap, and other human differences. No person shall be excluded from or discriminated against in admission to a public school or any town on obtaining the advantages, privileges, and courses of study of such public on account of race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, or discrimination." Our policy ACA, which was also adopted in May 2007, is nondiscrimination on the basis of sex. The school committee, in accordance with Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972, declares that the school system does not and will not discriminate on the basis of sex and the educational programs and activities of the public schools. We have policy AE, Commitment to Accomplishment, which was adopted in June 2007. The committee, I'm sorry, the school committee accepts ultimate responsibility for all facets of school operations. Policy BCA, which was adopted in September 2011, School Committee Member Ethics. A school committee member in his or her relations with his or her community should realize that his or her primary responsibility is to the children. Remember that he or her represents the entire community at all times. Hold on one second. I also have another section out of the Department of Education. Massachusetts Law 603 CMR 26, Access to Equal Education Opportunity, Section 7, Active Efforts. The school committee of each school district shall establish policies and implement that ensure that all obstacles of equal access to school programs for all students regardless of race, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, limited or sexual orientation are removed. To ensure that all students regardless of race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, or sexual orientation are given the opportunity to participate in all programs offered by the school and other extracurricular activities. All public schools shall strive to prevent harassment and discrimination based upon students' sex, gender identity, or sexual orientation. And all public schools shall respond promptly to such discrimination or harassment when they have knowledge of its occurrence. The school committee and the superintendent shall provide in-service training for all school personnel at least annually regarding the prevention of discrimination or harassment based upon sex, gender identity, and sexual orientation and appropriate methods of responding to such in a school setting. And I know that Safe Schools does come in annually and does sessions with our, with our teachers and administration. The superintendent, as an agent of the school committee, shall promote direct effective procedures for the implementation of 603 CMR 26, which includes program changes. Another one from DESI was the original one that was brought to the committee on February 4th. And this is put out by DESI for Safe Schools. LGBTQ youth are frequently cited as being disproportionately at risk for experiencing bullying and address patterns and barriers that may exist for LGBT students. I know along the way, I was told by Safe Schools that, you know, we have green and white and, you know, graduation gowns and we would never, ever tell our white students to wear the white gowns and our black students. And I'm taking this from somebody else. This is not my writing. But we would never have our white students wear white gowns and our black students wear black gowns. That's just unheard of and we wouldn't do it. And it's just, it's archaic. It's unbelievable to think that, you know, at some point, you know, that used to be segregated like that and we just, we can't go there anymore.
Bill?
Well, I don't disagree that things do need to change and that we don't want to exclude people and make, I know. But are there actual examples of kids being bullied over this right now? And I just don't think, I just think the vote that we made was with information, we didn't have all the information and that's, and that's a huge point for me is that, and I understand things should change, but with, not with that vote.
Bill? I want to vote to move the question to the second.
Second.
Okay. So, I guess you repeat the motion? Okay. So, can we have a motion to move the question? All in favor? All in favor of moving the question? Yeah. Okay, all in favor?
If you want to move the question, you can vote yes or no.
Okay, so Bill, Jack, Wayne, and then Emily. Okay, that's it? And Lisa, did you have your hand up?
Yes.
Okay, Joanna?
I don't, I can move first because I'm not part of this.
So, the motion is to...
No, you are. We can have to stop talking now.
Yeah, you are part of this. And Marie? You know, you want to know. Emily?
I'm going to go first.
Motion passes. Okay, so now we're going to vote on the rescind, correct? The motion is to rescind the vote made on graduation gowns, which was to have all students wear one color. All in favor?
Of rescinding the vote.
Of rescinding the vote back to the original. So, that's Dina, Marie. That's it? That's it?
I can't vote because I abstained.
Right, right. And you abstained, Joanna, right. Motion failed.
And I would like to abstain because I have...
One second, Joanna, excuse me. So, Emily, you said abstained. And I know Joanna and Chris. Okay. Second. Okay, any discussion?
So, the reason why I'm opposing this is because although I think that the personal motion is a good one, I think the problem is that I don't think people like to be dicted, too. And I think that's how people are feeling. So, I think that we had brought these students originally as a potential problem and can come up with solutions. We come up with custom gowns, something that everybody's happy with. Perhaps the student body would have been more on board with the current situation. So, that's why I'm making the motion.
Emily, Chris?
So, I absolutely support exactly what you said, what I said earlier. Because I wish that this had come through a different way. And I will have to say, I apologize, but I wasn't here to hear some of the students speak tonight because of professional obligation and that leaves me with lingering questions. But I, given that they had a choice, even though I'm not thrilled about the repercussions for students who don't feel like they have a voice, I would be in support of that as long as we take it to a conclusion before it gets lost in, you know, space. Because I don't want this to become a cycle where it's them and next year's students feeling like they didn't have a voice. Because I think they deserve one as students who don't feel like they're ready to use theirs.
Chris?
I'd like to say that I felt the same way the last time at the meeting. I felt that this is something that we educate our students to be civically minded and this would have been a great opportunity for them as a class to come up with a solution. And that solution might very well have been one of those options in the survey. But you're giving them the ability to look at a problem, talk about a problem, come up with a solution to a problem, that I think they are so much better equipped than most of us adults around this table to understand because it's not what we experienced growing up. I'd also like to invite Erin, if there's anything that you'd like to add.
I would agree with this reading statement. I think that student body, having made the choice of which graduation gown they would wear, will feel the service if that choice is not...
Bill?
I think, first of all, the students do have the options that were presented in the second survey. And I think that what's a little unfortunate is that this particular motion could be repeated next year, next year, next year. It'd be good, just changing the date. I think that there was the, followed the pardon procedure. There has been discussion, there has been input. And I cannot support this one.
So, I guess, have any comments to add? I'm not comfortable quoting, I hear it, I understand it, but I do know that, you know, a mental health provider contacted me about graduating senior. So, I'm not going to vote in favor of that because I know there's a student out there that this isn't working for. And, you know, unfortunately, I don't feel comfortable enough to speak.
Any special? So, all in favor of, how did you vote, Joanna?
Delaying information, I think we've done almost the on graduation gown color, which was on 24th graduation.
All in favor? Dina, Chris, Marie, Emily, Joanna? No? Bill? Elisa, have you heard?
No.
Motion failed. So, therefore now, the survey, the students are going to the motion field. So, now the survey that the students participated is going to come into play. Yes, yes.
I guess so.
Well, the survey that's in the packet is given once the correction is given to the school committee and the school committee wants a single uniform gown. Mr. Seymour put together some options for students to look at and you have the packet results of certain...
You mean with what?
Typically, I would say that what has been said at this table before is correct. It's not typical for a school committee to go out and take a specific color. If the school committee wants to set, perhaps it would be, could do that. But that would certainly be something that the principal, that the principal or what the advisors and the student input would, might be best equipped. Of course, again, Mr. Seymour and the students and the class advisors... Of course, again, Mr. Seymour and the students and the class advisors are under a pretty tight deadline, so there might be some conversations that have to take place with and see what other options might be viable.
So, my understanding is what somebody said earlier, that at least the couple of these choices are going to cost more. Is that right? Did I understand that?
Who's picking up that tab?
The students. So, that, I, that is a concern for me and I'm sure for other people, to like feel like we've made this decision and that it's going to force people to change, you know, financial decisions that they've made and not, I am not a believer.
I don't know what the costs are.
I know that the senior classes, I'm not sure if this policy still exists, they have a fund for graduation, which covers the prom, the banquet, and the yachts. So, if the yachts are being paid for, I would have fun to begin with, which exists right now. Mr. Seymour, is that still the case?
No.
Yeah, I mean, the senior class has monies that are raised and there are some student fees that contribute to that and those are used to pay for things like gowns and other senior events and, you know, senior banquets and keep the cost of the prom relatively affordable, things like that.
Do you know how much extra those schools, schools?
I don't. You know.
So, I would tell you ballpark.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if that, I know it's going to cost more, but I don't have any chance.
I don't know what they would charge. I don't know. Prior to that, so years ago, it was charged about five dollars for stolen. But I don't know what the price inflation is here in Massachusetts. And sometimes to avoid that altogether, we went ahead and just purchased them as a school and kept them unless the students wanted to purchase them.
Chris?
So I would like to make a motion that the, any additional cost to what the students have to pay out of pocket for the robes are absorbed by the district.
Second. Can we leave discussion?
I believe it was our decision forcing this on the students, so we need to remember that. But not expect the senior class to do it because that's the senior class funding that they have raised independently that they were not part of this decision.
Ben?
Comment in regards to the survey that was given to the senior class based off of the decision that was originally made. Ninety-six responses to this survey, there were 183 seniors in the senior class. I would like to see the survey resented out in paper form in a homeroom type setting so every senior has the opportunity to choose which gown they would like.
That could be.
So I would just follow up on that. I think that's a conversation the school government should have. Mr. Seymour, we need Mr. Seymour to talk with the members and say, what are the options? I think that's, but that overall obviously is a great, is a good idea.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for the, for the, for the school, right?
The district.
The district to pick up the additional cost. Any other discussion on that? All in favor? Okay, Chris?
Did you vote for it?
Yes, she did. Oh, all right. I mean, I personally don't want for the additional cost on the students. Can I vote, not vote, can I move this to go over the budget because we need to? Well, I think we're all set. I mean, now it's up to Jeff Donovan.
I just make a closing piece on this. So, I would just, based on everything I've heard tonight, I think the next step, I'll plan to meet as soon as possible, hopefully tomorrow, with the class advisors, with the senior class officers, with the senior class, perhaps on the school, the school council, I mean, student council, and the students who came tonight to be a part of the conversation and sort of disengage them. And we want to resend the survey, you know, looking at just a couple of the options so that ultimately we can give some guidance and then the class will make a decision.
And in the future, would there be any discussion or maybe committees put together for custom made gowns, Kentucky custom gowns?
I said, please, the first part of what you said.
I said, in the future, for the next graduating class, upcoming classes, would there be committees put together, would the senior classes put together a committee to discuss custom made gowns?
That's definitely an option.
Okay. Okay. Dick?
I hear Principal Seymour say that there was a fund to cover everything that we just decided to cover.
No.
Would you like any fire punches? Yeah, so the senior class has a fund, each class does. They raise monies, there are student fees that are collected and deposited into that. And ultimately, most of that is directed towards end of high school kinds of activities. Senior banquets, prom typically does cost something, but it keeps that cost down. There are other things that happen, like for instance, if you have a gap that's covered by the class, students don't pay extra for that. But, you know, there's, there's a concern always at the class, you know, do we have enough money, you know, to get through everything, trips, all these kinds of other things that cost money at the end. And, you know, I don't know exactly what the cost is going to be for whatever we come up with, but I know that it's going to be a little bit in addition too.
So I guess to clarify, students or parents pay for caps and gowns?
Yes.
The additional expense should not come out of the student fundraised money. My intention was that it comes out of some other administrative money that is sitting around within the district. It could be our store.
Right, and that's what you quoted, it's a different part of it.
Right, but, so I wanted to clarify that it's not coming out of the money that is set aside for student.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll determine what exactly they're going to do if that's in addition to what our typical capital costs. Then we can just say, you know, that sole cost of $10,000, I'm 180 there for you.
No, you're waiting for the balance.
Yeah, I don't really know what it's going to be.
Yeah, I get it, I get it. I've got a class advisor, I get it.
Jonathan, I know I put you on the spot, but when I was in the high school, there was always a certain, you know, the crack in the air, there was a surplus.
I mean, there often is, but I know that the thought of the advisors is, you know, do we have enough to get there?
I agree.
And then if you go into the surplus, you know that after you paid for the banquet and after you paid for the prom and after you've done the buses for the trips and all those kind of things.
Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is the fiscal year 2021 budget. Do you want to speak on this?
While I start, so at the last meeting, you, budget number you want us to target, Greg handed out to you, just a list, so we sat down and we figured out, okay, how do you think? So what you see in front of you is a list of all those options. Now, this is not nothing that is set, these are not things that are hard to factor, this is absolutely something we're going to look at, but these are viable options for us. So, just, we don't have to make that decision tonight, that's not what I'm asking you to do. If you see anything on here that is strong reactions to, negative, just let Greg or I know, we can go ahead and look at it and try to find another way. That's, we, and things may change as well. Some of these items, the next couple of months, we may need to, we may be able to take some things off of this list, but we, we don't, we don't know, but we know we can balance it and this is just showing you that we are able to balance these items. If you have any questions about these, any one of these individual pieces, insert the name of the answer to the question.
So I have one question regarding the substitute teachers.
Yes.
So, my concern is for a teacher who was named out, you know, two days ago, cut his quantity out every week or every other day.
Once a week or so.
Yes. So how would that be addressed? Because then we'd have a class potentially in study hall every weekend this day.
Sure. So, a couple of different things. The whole, the whole concept there would be that students wouldn't go to study hall just to do whatever. The, for plans, instead of writing out a whole bunch of plans and leaving them at their desk, it would be, they could be group class opens who say, this is what you have to accomplish on the classroom that, that period. So they wouldn't go into study hall unless it was lunchtime, which is another challenge we would have specifically in high school, but they end up being able to make the auditorium. We had to work those things out. But each one of those times, part of what teachers do for their children is when they're not there, if they can anticipate it, they'll have plans set. If they can't anticipate it, it's a different language typically, there's emergency plans that are in place. But in both of those instances, the children would just be in the cafeteria or the auditorium doing homework until, I guess they could, they could, an alternative, one thing, do something completely different. But eventually they'll be required, or they'll be asked, that teacher will, hopefully, be in the classroom or something.
Any questions?
Greg?
Okay, so for your directive at the last meeting, we have this sheet that we handed out as the superintendent explains to you is our first crack at recommending to you how we begin to a budget number for $44 million and $50,000, which is the number that the towns can support with all the state aid and all the fun things we waited for and are in, to go forward, that they will pass a town meeting. So I guess, unless there's any further discussion on these, like I said, what we're doing tonight is get voting the budget number 44050. Study these things, the adjustments that we've made. Any further adjustments can be made at any time going forward, but the towns need to know that budget vote tonight so we can send their assessment letters to them so they can have them by the 15th, which is the requirement of the regional area. Now, I'm sorry, Emily, yes?
I'm fine.
So, if there's no further discussion, we're going to vote on this, there are two lines that affect members of the school committee. One would have to leave for one vote on that line, one would have to leave for another vote on that line. Now, the first one, uniquely enough, the line end is zero.
Yeah.
Because we paid for that salary out of the revolving account of student fees, but just to be on the safe, no, that's not you. So, but just to be on the safe side, it is public money, so, thank you.
Can I ask some questions on some of these? The ones that you handed out today?
You can ask questions at any time, but I mean, right now, we're just voting on the budget, the bottom line number. The adjustment can happen anytime in the next weeks, you can take a look over it, you can discuss them anytime.
Which line is that?
This line is line 61 on page seven of your budget book, preschool teacher bag mail. Line 61.
Motion to approve line 61, preschool teacher.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Okay. The second line is for the contract of service of public safety. So, this time you open, you don't become that. Contract of service of public safety. Line 262, each 33. The amount of 32,000 dollars. The lower one, the amount is zero. This one is $30,000. This is for the public safety, public safety agreement with Westbury for school resource officer for the central campus.
I'll link the motion to approve line 262, contract of public service for 30,000 dollars.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, any discussion? All in favor? Any discussion, anybody else?
No. Nope.
Yes, Emily, can you come on? So now we're going to vote on the bottom line.
Now, we need a motion to approve the fiscal year 2021 general fund budget in the amount of $44 million, $50,000. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
With this vote tomorrow, the towns will receive your assessments so they can enter them into their county budgets. Thank you very much for your, for your help throughout the process. And like I said, the sheet that's before you was just our interpretation of how we can best get there educationally to the number we just voted. By all means, review your budget books, like I said, review the sheet that we gave you. Any questions you have, any comments you have, at any time, feel free to let us know.
First, I'd like to thank you for working on this. I know there's a lot to do. I serve as a general officer, I appreciate your hard work.
Thank you. Amen.
Next item on the agenda is the Student Opportunity Act Plan, as well as public input. Mr. Boddy to speak on what it is. Everybody in the room?
Student Opportunity Act is legislation that was passed in the state of Massachusetts, which basically promised public schools over a seven-year span, $1.5 billion in additional funding. The majority of that money over seven years coming through Chapter 70. This year, the budget that was passed included $304 million increase in Chapter 70 funding. Of that $304 million, it gets distributed to all of the school districts around the state of Massachusetts. Some of the larger urban districts, for instance, Plaine, received over $30 million, which there are 18 million dollars. There were about 40 districts across the state that received over $1.2 million in increase in Chapter 70. Kentucky's increase from the Student Opportunity Act was around $68,000. And actually, when you count in, as Greg will constantly remind me, it's really not 68. Once you're counting the offsets from charter reimbursement and other things, it's really about $21,000 of the increase from the state. Nonetheless, when you're given more money by the state and the legislator, legislative body, comes accountability with that and the form which, that was agreed on accountability is the Department of Ed, DESE, would ask districts to complete Student Opportunity Act plans. And they did divide them up, those who received a lot of money, those 40 districts having a much more extensive plan that they need to create and submit, and that everyone else needs to submit a much simpler form. We did create a draft plan, which you have tonight in your packet. That draft plan was shared with principals and was shared with site councils and did receive a little bit of feedback, which is incorporated into the draft plan that I brought to you tonight. There are some things to make note of, though. Number one, this plan does require approval of the school committee and it must be submitted by April 1st. We do seek approval tonight of that, but we also seek input tonight as well, I mean, to make operations, we can always come back if we've been all converted. They did give a lot of guidance on this. So beyond, remember what I said, the $304 million in increased Chapter 70 money, there's additional money, though, that was given to the state to support some priorities that the Department of Ed wants to move forward. And all of the plans submitted have four commitments. They're asking the, propose the state and districts to commit to focusing on student subgroups that have been, that have been performance gaps for you as a district and as a state. They're asking districts to choose evidence-based programs to close those gaps. That's commitment number two. Commitment three is to monitor the progress of those, to have a data system to ensure that you're actually making progress in metrics and targets. And then commitment four, increase or engage all families. Of note, for us, in commitment one, commitment two, our student subgroups are our special station, our students with disabilities, and also our low-income students. Those are students who have had persistent performance gaps in the district. And then when we look at commitment number two, the state listed 17 options the districts could choose from that were evidence-based programs. You could choose one outside of that, you just better have a good plan and explanation for why, of how you're going to spend your $68,000 towards it. And, but of the 17, they highlighted three. And the three that they highlighted are essentially attached to greater access to grant money beyond $68,000. And this is how the state will provide districts like Kentucky more money through this funding mechanism, so long as you're working on the things that they, that are aligned on what they want to accomplish. And our approach to devising our Student Opportunity Plan... And our approach to devising our student opportunity plan was to put us in a position to leverage those additional funds. $16,000 is not a lot, but you have to spend a little money to be able to get a little bit more. So our priority focus points for us were to focus on research-based early literacy programs in pre-kindergarten through early elementary grades. And that is one of the bolded points, and the state is already committing a lot of money towards that. So some of our initial work we're going to do around developing a literacy plan, advancing our assessment systems, a lot of the stuff that we've been doing allows us to continue to do that work. And puts us in a position to leverage some of that money moving forward. Tagging along with that is supporting educators to implement high quality and aligned curriculum. So in the plan here, to continue the opportunity to do that, we're hoping that some of the additional money allows us to purchase additional programs of. Curriculum that will help us meet some of the needs that we currently have. And then our other focus points, to create leadership pipeline development programs for our schools. So we can enter into a partnership with Salem State University and starting a leadership CAGS program with both Newburyport and Triton. Sort of a unique three district partnership to do that. And being able to commit some funding towards this for reimbursement of classes with teachers who engage in that CAG program. And then the last one is the state is very much committing funding towards early college programs. And Mr. Seymour has sent some great information out to our high school students who are current freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. And we're going to be inviting even our middle school students to our upcoming early college night where Northern Essex Community College has been coming and talking about the early college options and the programming that we provide. And by putting a little bit of funding into that to make sure that in particular, student, student subgroups have not always been represented. For instance, students with disabilities and low incomes, we have the funding mechanisms to be able to, so those, we remove some of those factors. So we built all of that into the plan here and, you know, I think we're pretty looking forward to submitting this and seeing the opportunities that lie ahead for us. I guess we're hoping those to, many's input.
Thank you for working on that. Any questions? So we need a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve the Student Opportunity Act Plan.
Second.
Any discussion? Last item on the agenda is donation. To PTO to. Uh, the Veramex School PTO donation, the convocs in the amount of $6,624. Do you see the motion? Second. Any discussion? So at the end of the evening, would public comment as well? If anybody wants to come to the microphone, it's the same, uh, that was spoken earlier this evening, introduce yourself.
I've already had some questions. People saying, well, the, the list of items that was discussed tonight.
Sure.
And then another major question.
Sure, with the caveat, we know that this is not a grant that we just. I just want to make sure they understand this is not.
Yep. That is off my next question, but I talked about it yesterday, but I think some point of people here like here as well. So that budget number is what you're working with. It does not mean the items can't change because that's a big concern amongst teachers who turn up in the application process. That number could change, but it's not a. Not the number to change.
44050 is set in stuff.
Right. I'm sorry. Yeah, our number is, yeah, that doesn't mean the items that make up that number can't change.
Correct, correct.
Except for the two we specifically voted on by line. Those can't change. Do you want the paper?
I'm going to come like.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjourn?